Associated vertebrae and discs. Everyone who is working must lift materials to either put them into place or to expedite them from one location to another. Back injuries are the most cumulative. A lot of small injuries leading up to a big one, therefore it is important to remember key elements of proper lifting, and that's getting help. Stretching before you lift. Determining load capacities. Determining your ability to handle the load. And making sure you have clear walkways. When you make a lift, make sure you're using your shoulders and your legs, not your back. Always use your knees to bend, not at your hip or your waist. And make sure that you lift with your legs.
Chase, that's a great topic. Thank you.
Reported officers and staff. Andrew's not here, but did Andrew leave anything for us?
No, he said it was just usual.
Okay. I will say, well, we'll do that when we get the claims. Billing office, Karen?
Let's see, for the month of August, we sent out nine thousand nine hundred eighty-six bills of those. We also sent out seventeen hundred and seventy-seven disconnect notices. We had fifty-two new customers, brand-new customers for the month of August. I inquired to Cottage Watchman about getting a quote to get our, I guess, cloud, which would be our backup video recording. Right now, it's only ten days, which hasn't been very helpful to us, especially when a customer has a complaint. It's typically about something that happened thirty-plus days ago. So I'm waiting to hear back from them about what that cost might be. And then also, at the end of the month, we are looking to go to IVR, which is interactive voice response for our payments. People will still be able to call in and select where they want to be directed, whether they want to talk to a customer representative or to just go straightforward and make a payment. That's all I have.
We didn't, at one time, we talked about it, we didn't extend the summer water rate till September, did we?
Right now, it's June through September.
Thank you.
It's an ordinance actually.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a city ordinance.
In case you go by my house, you'll know why.
We, I think, I took Mike's question. We didn't make a motion or pass the extension of the watering rates.
Right.
That's, which is allowable.
Okay.
In dry conditions like we have.
Well, this is really dry.
Yeah. Yeah.
Brown.
I actually saw some green today.
You're saving on gas money for your mower though.
There you go.
Thank you, Karen. Bill, you're up next.
So on Monday, we'll have our annual truck testing where they come in and test all the booms on all the trucks for the dielectric strength, X-ray the booms for cracks, and then also test all our hot sticks and everything that we use when we do hot work. So we've been making preparations for that by cleaning and waxing all fiberglass. On the morning of September eleventh, we had a pole hit out here on the Michigan Town Blacktop that we had to repair, and we're still working on pole changeout on the East Pro County. And also, we went back to replacing the porcelain cutouts with the poly cutouts because we've been having a lot of problems with those cracking, causing outages. So we've been doing that and putting on road and guard to protect future outages. And we completed two underground primary extensions for two new homes being built. And one day last week, I think, we assisted PJ with a line truck at the waste floor treatment plant.
Great. I had these on earlier, but this is the kind of things that happen in this community. This was the alley behind Arnie's and the new courthouse annex, before and after. Bill, you guys did a super job on that.
Big difference.
We found a lot of buried treasures down there too there. Lot of buried treasures.
No diamonds behind Alice's?
Shane, you're up.
Real quick, Phil, I did want to ask you a question. So we posted, obviously, about that sign ordinance on the municipal utility social media page. And I know one of the things that came to my attention that I did not realize is some of our utility poles are also being used as holders for stop signs at some of our intersections. And so, obviously, that came up as a question, fair question, right? So is that something we, because obviously, the street department has to use them in those respects because they cannot also have the space for an additional stop sign pole in that area. So I just wanted to bring that of note, because that was a question that was raised by some individuals. I don't know if there's room for that or how we handle that with the street department.
If you could get me a address, if I need to check it out and get the phone.
Okay, yeah.
I do wonder if it was just, over the years, if it was just convenient to put a stop sign on a utility pole versus thinking that other, yeah, might be the case. I don't know.
The other thing is, I noticed they're putting them higher now, too. Okay, Shane.
Not a whole lot to report tonight. Basically, the reporting on the password resets. There was four password resets. None of them were because anybody neglected to change the password. Out of those, one person just requested out of the blue, just a password reset. The others were the fact that they went to change the password, and then, once they changed it, they couldn't get in. So I assume it was just some sort of typo to like, "Help." But other than that, we haven't had anybody else neglect their password change. So been doing good.
I want to thank you for following up on that topic, Shane. When that became identified earlier this year, at the time, it seemed like a pretty prevalent reoccurring issue. And through your emails and your coaching, our staff and city staff, it sounds like you have it well under control. So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. I would say with the department heads letting their staff know, that's made a big difference.
You'll never have zero, so you're down to the small numbers that we might hope to get, so good job.
Other than that, I've just been taking care of things as they come through, so everything's everything's working.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Shane. Chase?
For the Water Works, pumpage numbers, kind of just want to give you guys an idea of where we are and some history on this. Monthly average for August is three million six hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and fifty, with a high day in August of four point two million. It's actually four point two seven million. If you look at that number and you compare it to August of 2022, our average was three million three hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred and had a high day of, in that month, of four point five two million. So our numbers are staying pretty consistent throughout, over the last three years. We did replace a hypo injector that goes in after filtration. It was leaking, so we got it replaced. And we had peerless out to do an aquifer study, and that should be finalized and wrapped up by September. Meter shop, we are going through meter changeouts still. It's going to be a process. But in just over two weeks, we had a hundred and thirty-three meters replaced. That's the five-eighths residential meters. That's not including our industrial meters. We're also finding a lot of information regarding shut-off issues and some lead service line information as well, that maybe we didn't have all the information on. So what I mean by that is some of these are on curb stops and are on old iron lines that won't shut off very easily, and they are being replaced and put into our work order system to be replaced, which plays into our lead service line replacement. That's going on actively, too. We did have one issue with, we had a guy in a van. It was on the southwest side of town, going through a couple, or going to a couple homes door-to-door. This may be something you want to put on social media, Krista, that telling people the water was unsafe to drink and that they needed to come in and do some checks. So I don't know, we didn't locate them. We don't know anything about them. But we may put it on social media that if it's not a Water Works vehicle or someone with Water Works identification, to not let them in your home. On maintenance, we had seven iron service renewals, one copper service renewal, two copper service repairs, one move to getting the meter pit on the correct property, five total new services. Four of those were at Meadow Brook, one main break, one valve, eight-inch valve installation, and one valve box repair. And then, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Is our East Armstrong Street project in?
It is not done. They're working on services. That is something I did not put in here. The main is active. The old main is not shut off yet. The main is active, so some homes are already on the new main. Some of the services are going in. I think there are eight total that are done out of twenty-one. I think some parts issues are happening right now, and they are trying to get the correct parts in. Outside of that, everything's really kind of going according to plan.
Chase, let me ask you a question, follow-up to your capacity data there. Am I correct in recalling that the water plant has the capacity to pump nine million gallons a day? Is that the right number?
Yeah, we're a nine-million plant.
So with your high flow rate for August of four point two, that's about, according to AI, it's forty-six percent of capacity, so just under half of capacity, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have a lot of headroom there.
Lots.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure my numbers were correct in my head. Thank you.
Isn't there a suggested?
There's a firm capacity number, so once you get to that number, what it is, is it's basically, they can call it a percentage, but it's basically what your system would do with a large piece of equipment out of service. So if a filter was out, or a high-service pump, or a well, or something along those lines. And our firm capacity is seven point two million, but we are capable of pumping nine.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Chase. DJ?
All right, maintenance guys have started cleaning and cambering for the projected twenty-six paving list. We also did a repair, lateral main and lateral repair on Green Street, lateral repair on Sixth Street. We had five sewer calls, three of them on the homeowner or property owner, one on us, and one on Fox Contractors. We've run into, I think, four in the last two months that Fox has been responsible to fix on State Road Twenty-Eight. The guys at maintenance also helped us haul solids inside the long-term storage building at the plant. The guys at the plant serviced all flight lift station pumps in the system. So those are supposed to be done annually. Those are complete. We passed semi-annual bio-monitoring. And on a good note, our newest hire, which has been there just less than a year, but he had some experience before he came, he passed his class-one test.
Perfect, perfect.
That's it.
Anything?
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, PJ. Rick, anything on the lagoons?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Todd goes to golf course, too. The swans that they put in the pond at the golf course seem to be doing the job.
I don't know. One time I was by there after they put them in, there was about fifty geese in there with them.
Oh, really?
So who knows, Mike?
Do they take your balls?
There are some in there, yes. There are some in there. I have some all over the place out there, Mike. Mike just mentioned the lagoons, Rick, and I need to get with you sometime. We had an ADA study done with the city and us. They went around to all the buildings, all the properties. And the lagoons was one of them, and there are some things that we have to address. We have twenty years to get it addressed, but we need to address and start addressing some of them, so.
I'm not one to procrastinate. Let's get going.
So I do have that in my office, and I'll get with you sometime. And I'll get you a copy. I'll scan and email it to you for you to take a look.
Why don't we do that before the weather turns bad?
Yeah, you gotta take a chance. It's not going to turn bad.
All right.
And Mayor, did you say, there were comments at Muffin's with the mayor the other day about the lagoons? I wanted to remind you of that. Okay. They were saying that it's even trimmed up after the year?
Been done. It was done a week ago Friday.
Okay, okay. Just trimming, like weed, just general weed care.
Yeah, it was done a week ago Friday. They got it just before the, was it Boy Scout fishing derby, I think is what it was? But they did it the day before, so it's all trimmed up and looks good.
What's interesting with lagoons is you have the faction who say, "Well, this should be a natural habitat." Then you have the faction, "Well, this hasn't been weed-eated for ten days. What's going on?" So we're trying to balance, you know, two. I'm glad you mentioned it. It was, what, two years ago when the board provided the county highway department an award and a plaque naming them official Friends of the Lagoons for the work they do out there, grading and occasionally gravel. And we do appreciate that.
Typically, they'll show up twice a year. Obviously, I mean, they're going to come out by after a couple of weeks ahead of time. They've been busy checking the field, so.
Yeah.
You know, they got there when they could, and I, there are times that you try to handle it. Again, like he said, you know, African Indian doesn't want you to mow anything.
Right.
They want it to be natural.
Right, so, yeah, it's a balance. We do appreciate our friends at the county highway. They do a great job for us.
Another thing, Chase mentioned the aquifer study that's supposed to be, is due to us. The whole study will be to us in written form at the end of this month. I had a long conversation with Tim Hill and Zach Klein Friday. And Zach is the one that's putting all the information together, and they did a pump test about three weeks ago, right, is when it was? And he said that we have a very, very unique situation to where our two aquifers do not work together. They are both independent of one another. So when they pump from the top, the bottom one levels rise. When they pump from the bottom aquifer, you would think that the top aquifer would lower, but it actually increases while it recovers. They said that we actually are sitting on two completely independent aquifers. And they're, but they're going to finish the, finish all the documents and stuff and get them to us. But he said that it was so unique that he had never seen it before. I said, "Well, let's use this as a learning curve and don't charge us that you learned something." That's not going to go, that didn't go over very well. But it's very, very good news with what they were seeing. There's a hundred and fifty feet of clay between the two aquifers. No, I mean, there's gravel and stuff, but the clay base is a hundred and fifty feet thick. That's why they don't affect one another. So it was good news. Good news.
And our neighbors all around us are probably very jealous, because none of them have anything like what we have.
No, I'm sure, no. I know there's somebody within, what, about thirteen miles of us that would love to have one of them, one of the situations. So that was good. It was a good conversation on Friday that I had with them. Another thing is that I was able to get with Jordan Brewer the other day, and he took me in. We got into Kent's computer, and I have the budget forms that he uses. So I'm getting that ready. Just got to change the dates, you know, the years and all that type of stuff. But the formulas and everything should be the exact same thing that we did last year, so we will be getting that prepared and getting those ready as well. So that time of the year for us. And then the other thing is, I emailed everybody the, our capacity analysis and didn't know what you guys thought, if you would like to see anything else. But it's a, it's a pretty good starting draft. I think it's pretty solid at this point in time. I know Mike called me with a, had a couple letters reversed, but we got that fixed up. But I didn't know what you guys' thoughts or opinions, if you'd like to see something different in here.
I really, I haven't had time to look at it that closely yet, so.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
I think that would be a good discussion item in the future.
Yeah, absolutely. To fully digest it, and then I think what would be great is to take it and to be able to distill it down into public-facing talking points as well, because there is some stuff that we need to explain in a little bit different of terms, right? For just general knowledge for people.
Could I add to that? Todd, would you?
Yeah.
So to put it in context, it was during a board discussion, perhaps three or four meetings ago, I alluded to the intent of making a engineering analysis, engineering-based analysis for all these capacity numbers. So that document represents that engineering analysis. So it's, the intended audience are probably those people that are pretty familiar with each of the utilities already, the terms we use. So yes, I think in the industry, we might want to translate that to conversational English, is the term we would use, because it is a little technical in some areas, so that would be good. So we get past the working draft, we get it nailed down to a revision one. That'd be a good time to do that. But meanwhile, keep the feedback coming, because it's always good.
Yeah, because Rick and I have been working on this together and everything, and I can't tell you how many, in the short period of time, how many different revisions there are in my computer right now as well.
There's five or six, aren't there?
Yeah, yeah. So, but it's been, it's been a good process, and we're getting there. But I think when we get to that point, as Krista mentioned, if we keep getting the questions asked and stuff about our capacities, we can, we can have this if everybody agrees, and then, or a version of this. Here it is in writing, and don't take everybody's word for it, or let the rumor mill get started, but here it is in black and white, or in color, however we choose to print it, so.
Okay. Could I add one more thing?
Yes.
The other means to the end there was, we began with creating the form, the template document. And that would be reusable, that's the intent. So any new business industry interested in coming into our utility service area, maybe it's just electric, maybe it's out in the county, just electric, or maybe it's in the city and it's everything, all utilities, we can use the same template, just populate it.
Exactly.
Perfect. And that gets us something, we can create a library of that over the years and maintain it, that helps us move forward, so.
Correct. Yep, so that's really all I have for right now, unless anybody has any questions or anything.
Questions?
I have a comment. My comment is, Todd's been doing a great job, and I really appreciate working with you.
Thank you, Rick. This has been, I'm serious, this has been a pleasure working on it. I've learned a lot and finding out more things than I really, you know, there's been several times that he's asked a question. I'm going to have to look into that, and I thought I knew pretty much all of our stuff in our utilities, and I found out I haven't yet, so there's still, there's still room to improve. But things are, as usual, are going very well, except for like the pole getting hit. I was up having a cup of coffee at one-thirty in the morning, and I seen the email, and I was out there, and Cameron tells Phil, "Todd's been here already." Well, okay. But fortunately with that, a young lady fell asleep and took out a pole, and she ended up with just a scratch on her arm, so that was the good news out of the whole thing. Yeah, she got very, very lucky. But it hit the pole, it pulled the underground, and pulled the meter base off the house, and went forty, fifty feet or? Hundred and sixty feet away and pulled the meter base off the house. She was very, very lucky, very lucky. But, and we meant to get pictures of the way the road was all set up and cones and everything once it got daylight and got done and got it tore down. But we didn't mean to get pictures of that so that you guys could see the, how everything was set up with the trucks. The, we had flaggers. We had everything out there, so it was, these guys did a great job. And I fed them, too, so they're all right. Thanks, guys.
As we move into the approval of claims, there is an additional claim from Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield that's not in your, wasn't in the packet. It's thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. There's two parts to it, and then the dental vision is six thousand two hundred and four dollars and sixty-seven cents. I'd ask that this be included in the claims if we approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Rick. Second?
Second.
Second, Mike. Thank you. Becky, whenever you're ready.
Crystal Stilwell, hi. Rick Garnon, Rick Gudgen.
Aye.
Mike Reader.
Aye.
Mike Kelly.
Aye, thank you. Under unfinished business, just a reminder, the employee appreciation is a week from Friday at Prairie Creek Park, and we certainly hope that we can show you our appreciation for your hard work and, over this last year, anyway. I think it's been about a year since the last one, so thank you. We'll take care of that.
Mike, could you clarify what the work schedule is for our staff that day?
I believe I had it on another piece of paper, one-thirty?
I didn't know if it was one or one-thirty. I can't remember.
I think one. The business office wanted to stay open.
Till one.
Till one. So that they could, people, lunch hour, and everybody could get in. So one o'clock, and then after we're finished, then the dismissal for the day.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have this under unfinished business because, one, we need to take action on it, and it's advanced benefits represented for New York Life. Our life insurance policy was due for renewal. And, but it's, the rate is going to be the same, but I thought that this board needed to take the action of approving that, and then we can, no need to go out and find something new when you have something that's worked, and there hasn't been an increase in the cost. And I think the city is under the same impression, I think, isn't it, Mayor?
Yeah.
So I would entertain a motion that we approve the continuation with New York Life through advanced benefits.
I'll move that we continue forward with New York Life.
A second?
Second.
Mike Reader. Oh, roll call when you're ready.
Rick Gudgen.
Aye.
Mike Reader.
Mike Reader.
Aye.
Chris is so well. Aye. Mike Kelly.
I have on here unfinished USB position notice, and I think that was, you're, it was filled tonight, so.
It got filled.
Update on pilot discussion, I don't believe we're ready to do anything yet, but with the approval of the board, I'd like to set a, a work session in one of the meetings next month, to discuss pilot, as a, and, and also probably maybe some work on the handbook in, in a work session. I, I have a, I asked Josh which, if there was a meeting he was not gonna be at, so I, I would probably say, we won't, we'll know, I'll put out what night that will be before, as soon as I get word from Josh. It'll either be the first or second meeting, depending on his availability, so I think I want all the board to be here for that.
Works for me.
I don't believe I have anything else, does anyone else have something that we need to discuss for the, for, tonight?
Lot of questions about meeting times.
Okay.
Well, I didn't know what you guys were thinking there, or whatever, but this whole program needs to put an explanation.
Well, there was a, there was an inquiry about why we meet at four when the public has a difficult time getting here, and I just, I think we just, we, we need to think about it, but I don't, I mean, we have three people from the public here tonight, and I don't think we'll make that, we wouldn't make that decision in, effective until it be next year, anyway.
Oh, okay, okay.
So some of the, some of the factors we had discussed in the past were, if, if the meeting is at four, then the employees that attend the meeting, they're more efficient use of time, they're already here at the utility office in town, at least, versus going home, maybe doing dinner, or whatever, coming back at, for a seven o'clock meeting, and then also you get it, you get it over with, so you have the rest of the evening free. And I think that maybe the third factor is, most recently, and we were intending to do this anyhow, because we make these meetings available over the internet, both live and archived, people can observe the meeting, and maybe develop questions later without being here in attendance. So, to me, it's a balance. Personally, I'm flexible either way. My only request is, we don't change it back and forth, but other than that, I, I can do anything.
I like the way it is for these guys being able to be here.
Why don't we ask them, for those folks in the, on the front row, maybe the front two rows, have a preference?
Three rows.
Front three rows?
Four?
So like you, I would prefer not to go home, eat dinner, and have to come back, right? I think four o'clock's good for me, and for Chris.
If it gets moved back to seven, it's a good chance on the whole bus.
Is there, is there overriding concern from the public that this is too early?
I only had one inquiry.
You had one inquiry? Oh, okay, all right.
But I said I would bring it up, so.
Is it the same person that wants the grass trimmed at the lagoons?
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
Well, I think it's just, it's, it's alluded to a lot, that a lot of these types of meetings may or may not happen at times when public participation cannot necessarily happen, right? So, in reading a lot of these threads of things over the past few weeks, you know, commissioners meetings, for example, happen at ten AM, right? Well, that's in the middle of a workday for people. Ours happens at four, technically still in the middle of a workday, right? So, you know, as I think about it, again, it's a balance, right? It is. I mean, they're available online, but at the same time, for those who do wanna come and do want to participate publicly, they may be limited by their work schedule, so I, I think it's something at least worth of acknowledging and talking about, and then we make a decision, and we, you know, our decision is backed up by a four PM for various reasons, and I think that's completely fair.
Good comment. I, I would add, I, I come from the line of thought that we, we should be making data-driven decisions, in other words, decide based on data, and from, from my recollection, we have had this meeting scheduled at seven PM for several years, we've also had it scheduled at four PM for several years. I first was named to this board in twenty fifteen, I remember maybe three occasions when a member of the public came to speak to the board, and, and those were all about the lagoons, oddly enough. I don't know, there's a big clamoring for people to stand at the podium and, and inform us of what they think, or, or whatever. If that's, if that's not true, if people are anxious to get here and just can't do it at four PM, call one of us and let us know. I, I, I say that because I'm not inclined to pay a lot of attention to social media input, so, but if you wanna call me, and members of the public wanna say, hey, we'd like to have this later than four, because I can't get there at four, I work till four, that's a fair comment. We'll have to consider the other meetings that take place, but that's just my thoughts, and there's, there's five of us here, so I'm not speaking for everybody, but.
Additionally, if members of the public do wanna come, they can't come at four o'clock, there are options that are available, such as scheduling a special meeting at seven o'clock on a different night to discuss that specific topic. They could also email the, the board, or they could provide a written statement that could be read at the meeting if they wanted their opinion to be heard, and they weren't able to come. So there are some alternatives if they wanted to, as well.
I'm glad you mentioned that.
I like you, Rick. I don't remember too many people coming to seven o'clock meeting either, unless there was really hot issue, like dead fish in the lagoon.
And then we just had a select couple here. It wasn't a lot.
And Alicia, thanks for reminding me, one of the, one of the tidbits that, that I've been trying to normalize, and I've got this, this is a working process, is when I look at the city council meeting notice thing, and the footnotes, it'll, the text alludes to being able to submit comments in advance, and how, how to do so. We haven't yet incorporated that into our footnotes, so we should probably borrow that language, put it into the utilities as well, because the same thing applies. We're happy to take comments in advance, here's how you do it. So, thanks for reminding me.
Absolutely. I already have to update our agenda to add our terms and add our appointments as well, so I can get with Carol, and get the language that they use, and plug that in at the bottom, and just make our footer even more robust.
So, do we wanna make a decision to retain four o'clock, then?
I think that's what it sounds like.
I'm a, I'm a big proponent of the, the theory of voice, voice of the customer, voice of the business. I just heard from the business, four o'clock is preferred, so yes.
I'll put that in a form of a motion.
Second?
A motion that we continue the meetings at four o'clock. Becky, whenever you're ready.
Chris is so well. Aye. Mike Reader.
Aye.
Rick Gudian.
Aye.
Mike Kelly. There you go, Todd. Night, you know.
That could be scratched off.
All right, anything else that we've forgotten? I would entertain a motion for adjournment, then.
So moved.
Motion for adjournment, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.